And in that case, I will call the meeting to order at six oh one and we can stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and I'll turn it over for a roll call, please.
Mrs. Gillard?
Yeah.
Mr. Pascal? Mr. Jackson?
Here.
Mrs. Carey?
Here.
Mr. Annaly?
Yeah.
And Mr. Nolan?
Here. And Mr. Pascal is here.
I am here, I was muted.
And I'll turn this over to Ms. O'Shea.
Good evening and Happy New Year, everyone. I want to point out the pictures, as always. First, pictures of students sledding at Harmony Hill before break, students from this Agden's class. And every year, Mr. Van Dyke asks me if I want to go sledding and each time I happen to have a dress on, so sorry, but one of these years I will. The second picture, thank you so much to the Elks. We received a donation of $1,000 from them. And unfortunately, I was not able to accept, but Aaron Hill, our director of special programs was, so again, thank you. And then the final picture is a screen chat of Abram Lansing's holiday sing-along, which was broadcasted live from the Host Music Hall on December 23rd. And it's still on our website for anyone who wants to watch.
Let me just take one second and appreciate Mr. Bird's fabulous jacket. Really embody the holiday spirit. Good work, Mr. Bird.
So I know he's going to be with us in a couple moments, so maybe he's still wearing that, we don't know. So before I do move on to Mr. Bird, so first of all, as always, if you have questions, you can email them to boe微comment@thehost.org. Or any comments you wish to make. And I do just want to share a little bit of good news before Mr. Bird comes on. Our Chromebooks have finally arrived. So.
That deserves a round of applause. Great ring.
We received 370 Chromebooks yesterday. One forty for Abram Lansing, one forty for Harmony Hill, and ninety-fourth Host High School. It was the remainder from the previous order. We've been waiting for these since the school year, so we are very happy that they've arrived. And they were purchased through Title One and Title Four funds, so. And then next, Mr. Bird, the principal of Abram Lansing, is joining us this evening to present his school's comprehensive education plan. He will discuss both the process and the plan. So without further ado, here is Mr. Bird. I'm not sure, let's see your jacket this evening, Mr. Bird.
By the way, that's not a jacket, that was a suit. Thanks. So thanks for this opportunity, I'm sorry it's recent, but it is nice to be able to chat with you. If you have looked at our Abram Lansing S C E P plan, on the second page, you see that we're on the list because of one subgroup in the eighteen-nineteen school year, based on those test results. And due to that subgroup, we did some soul searching. Should we focus first on that subgroup? Or should we look at the subgroup as a canary in the coal mine? And if you look carefully at our data, they're not the only subgroup that was teetering. Several of our subgroups were ready to fall. So we're taking the rising tide approach that if we help everybody improve, then our subgroup, specific subgroup will improve as well. Four out of the five indicators are based on the New York State assessments. So we have to focus pretty strongly on how our students do test-wise. Three and a half of the goals that you're going to see tonight were given to us by New York State. We had to work around the goals that they told us to use. We'll explain what the half and the other one are as we go through. Our first two goals are ELA goals and math goals. We didn't have a state assessment last year, so it's kind of unfair to ask us to try to do, improve from two years ago, especially since like two-thirds of those kids aren't in our school anymore. So we are using the NWA map to show growth from September to June. The challenge, one of the challenges with this plan is that we had half a year to write it, and now we have a half a year to make it happen. So each of these goals are expected to be met by the end of June. We have some wiggle room over the summer to make some of these plans happen as well. But the first two plans, the first two goals you're going to look at obviously have to be done by the end of the year because they're based on test scores. Our ELA scores last year, actually, or the last year that we took the math test, fifty-two percent of our kids K through five met their expected growth score in ELA on the math test. We're going to hope to improve that to sixty percent. And click, I don't know how this works. Aaron, click there. Our math goals, fifty-three percent of our kids made their expected growth score in math, and we're hoping to improve that to sixty percent as well. I firmly believe now, Teresa Billington, who worked with us in creating this goal from Bosse's, said to Ms. O'Shea that she took a lot of road trips with me because I use a lot of analogies. I happen to think our teachers are excellent drivers. I think the problem is we haven't given them clear goals and a good GPS to get there. So our plan this year, if you look through the plan, is to spend a good amount of time making sure the teachers understand what the standards are and unpacking those standards, and then understanding how to get to those expectations, which we haven't had the time to do. So over the next four months, our teachers, well, at each grade level, spent a half a day with the Bosse staff unpacking their own standards. So a third grade teacher will spend half a day breaking down the ELA standards and later on in the year, breaking down the math standards for their specific grade level. And then in a following month, we're going to ask them to understand the standards of the grade level before and the grade level after. There's two reasons for this. One, if you're a third grade teacher and you have a student that comes in at the first grade level reading, in the past couple of years, we've kind of let the teachers fly on their own. If they understand what the first and second grade standards are and what students need to do to meet them, then we're giving them a better understanding of how they get the student to grow to their grade level. But the other piece that we've talked about for years and we never really focused on is, what if you're a third grade teacher and your student is reading at the fourth grade level? Oftentimes, our teachers will go, you know, well, we'll just let them stay there. But some of our growth scores are poor because we haven't gotten our brighter kids to grow. So we also want our grade level teachers to understand what are the standards of the grades above them so that we can help all of our students grow. So that's how we're going to work on growth scores for ELA and math. Our next goal, click, it worked, is our survey goal. So this is the New York State, has told us that we have to write a goal based on our survey. We get to pick what that goal would be. And try, as she might, I'm going to brag for a second, but try as she might, Teresa Billington had trouble finding tinks in our school culture. We interviewed, we did two additional surveys. We interviewed parents who have students in the subgroup who failed. And they all love our kids coming here, they love what we do with our kids, they love how we care for the kids. So what we decided to listen to was our parents tend to flinch whenever our phone number shows up on their phones. And that's because we tend to always call them when there's a problem. So our goal over the rest of this year is to try to make sure that we're sending positive notes home as well. And I'm not sure who gets responsibility for this, but thank you, thank you, thank you, whoever came up with Parent Square. We have a lot of reasons to complain about it. I got about forty messages over the Christmas break from parents that thought of something and could connect with me right away. So I was happy to get back to them, but now we're trying to find positive ways to use Parent Square. At my faculty meeting yesterday, in about thirty-two seconds, I asked a teacher to hold up her cellphone, I took a picture of her, sent it to her by Parent Square, and it showed up on her phone. So we're trying to get our teachers to understand that pretty easily now, they can send positive messages to our teachers without a lot of extra effort. Our teachers bought in about five years ago to sending positive postcards. So we're getting out of the twentieth century now, wow, and moving into the twenty-first and trying to find ways to electronically let our parents know the good things that are going on here at school. And finally, click. Not finally, sorry, four. We were asked to pick our own goal, and one of the banks of my existence in the thirty-two years I've been here is trying to understand how we look at kids that aren't being successful. Used to call it a child study team, it's an instructional support team, whatever the letters are that we're using. What happens is, our good teachers will find a child that's having trouble and she'll, my example is a quiver, she'll pull an arrow out of the quiver, try that, if it doesn't work, she'll pull the next one out until all of a sudden, there's nothing left in her quiver, and then she'll come to the instructional support team. And what's the first question we ask? What have you done? Well, I've done everything I had in my quiver. Well, you need to show that to us. So as we begin to help our teachers understand unpacking the standards and how the standards work, if I'm a third grade teacher and picking on them, I can say, I worked through this and this and this in the second grade standards to move my child forward. And here's what I did and how it worked as we worked through this. This is a pretty big chunk to bite. So what we're doing this year is just looking at tier one. What is it our classroom teachers are being asked to do in tier one? What data are we asking them to collect? And then by the end of the summer, have kind of a clear understanding of where teachers can go and then what they should do to ask for help to move into tier two. And now finally, click. Yay. We have to look at absenteeism. One of the problems we ran into, and it's an administrator problem, is every student that is chronically absent is different, right? One is chronically absent because their parent has trouble with their car. One is chronically absent, many of them are chronically absent because they live at serotegusites and they have trouble getting here. We've got kids that are chronically absent because there's somebody sick at home, or the student has asthma. But what we don't have is a clear beginning and middle. So we're trying to come up with, we're not reinventing the wheel, we're looking for resources to show us what should be using generally first as the first step. What do we do first? What do we do second? Before we get to understanding what the individual issues might be. So we're going to look at what's available out there. What we should be doing as our students start to head towards chronically absent, and what are some methods we can use to try to prevent them from hitting the tipping point and then falling over. Chronic absenteeism is a problem statewide, that's why the state's asking us all to look at that. Our subgroup actually were chronically absent, so it's a good thing for us to be looking at this. But again, we're looking at this building-wide. That's it. I think you're on the next item. So are there any questions?
I just wanted to jump in real quick, and thank you for the presentation. I just, how difficult or how realistic do you think the goals are considering the upside-down nature of everything? And how do we, you know, obviously, we're supposed to show improvement, but also things are very different this year and improvement in areas, some areas seems feasible, but some areas may not be as feasible as it otherwise would be to make improvements in a typical school year. So how do we go about that and?
I can give you three simple answers. One is, we are not including the Abram Lansing teachers that are teaching virtually, just because we're not sure. And number two, we're not assessing those kids with NWA map, so they wouldn't work anyway. Number two, one of the pitfalls education seems to have is exactly what you just did for us, Mr. Nolan, which was, okay, why didn't we meet the goal this year? Well, there are six different reasons why we didn't meet the goal. And we could use COVID as the newest reason, but I think we need to stop doing that. And number three, the state doesn't give us that option. The state is saying, look, you need to start doing the work and showing growth. So we picked, it's not a monumental goal from fifty-three percent to sixty. Bosse's was kind enough to actually help us pick what they think is a reachable goal, knowing what the circumstances are. Now, the other answer to that is, you know, if COVID continues to wreak havoc and we all disappear for a while, then you're right, then I'm going to lose sleep over this. But I think this is a good goal, easily met. If we do our best to make sure our teachers understand what they're supposed to be teaching and how they should be teaching it using the resources that we have.
Thank you, that's perfect.
I just wanted to add that I actually love this as a goal for this year because it's using the growth scores and not the proficiency scores. So it gives us an opportunity to show what we're doing with taking kids from where they are to where they are at the end of the year. And, you know, proficiency scores don't always give us the ability to show that. I think the growth scores are a prime opportunity to say, this is what we're truly accomplishing.
Well, and it is fair, Mark, I saw you raise your hand. It is fair that if you look at the accountability standard, the indicators, that three of the four test score indicators are based on growth scores. So the state is being relatively fair about that and understanding that not everybody can, you know, be expected to jump three feet high at the end of the school year, but we can expect to go from two and a half to three if that's where they started. Mr. Pascal?
You brought up the ability to send images home, to communicate so quickly using the Parent Square. I just think that's powerful stuff, and especially during such, and I don't think anyone's using COVID as an excuse, I hope, I don't believe so. I just think these are such stressful times. I've got a grandson who started kindergarten, Brianna's son, if you can imagine, started kindergarten. And I just think, what must this be like for these young, young children? Just trying to make sense of all this. And I just think it's a time to try to maximize on anything positive we can. The pictures of kids skiing, and I know we have to get our work done. And I know our friends from the state, they're always there. But, you know, I think we do need to be sensitive and supportive to all that the students gone through, our teachers are going through. And I think that's a way, sending those pictures home and that kind of communication, I just think it's good to do what Tulsa does, and it's almost therapeutic during these times. So I'm glad you brought it up, and I hope that our staff is taking advantage of that.
Thanks.
Mr. Bird, I just wanted to say, I think the plan was very well thought out. I like the bottom-up approach of, you know, getting a kid where they are and getting them to reach their goals by starting at the bottom. And the umbrella feel of this of having all of our staff trained to know what to do and not just the particular subgroups, because I think all kids will benefit from this. I think that, you know, the support, the more support we can give our staff to do their jobs, the better our kids are going to perform. So I feel like this was really reflective of that, and I appreciate that. I have one question on the tier-one intervention piece. I'm just curious to know how that will be measured. It doesn't seem clear to me in the end, how you can tell and see if that's effective.
We actually wrestled with that. Our original end-of-year goal was kind of shut down by Ms. O'Shea, so you can thank her later. We're trying to kind of come up with, so here's the deal, I don't think our RTI is working, and I'm not sure why. I mean, the example that I gave is I know all of my teachers use all the resources that they have. But again, if I go back to driving, I'm not sure they're using the resources in the right direction all the time. So one of the plans in unpacking the standards is helping the teachers understand exactly what tier one is and how they can be doing tier one in the classroom. Tier one is supposed to be done in the classroom. And some of this is also research-based because I get in my mind what I think in RTI, what tier-one RTI should be, and then I read somebody else that says, no, then I'm off by three miles. So now I need to recalibrate and figure out what tier one should be. So we're coming up with what we think is a clear understanding of tier one, what teachers can be and should be expected to do. So the plan at this point is making sure teachers are consciously aware that they are doing tier one, doing tier one doesn't, that they're using tier-one resources in the classroom. So that awareness, I think, is what we're looking at documenting. We have a guess as to how many people said at the beginning of the year they were doing tier one, whether they actually were or not, we're not sure. So how do we show other, I mean, I grew up in the sixties, so I have different ways of showing raising consciousness. Not sure that would fit here. But what we're trying to document, the fact that we're having our teachers understand what tier one is and how they're using it. And at this point, what we're doing is just saying, did you do tier one, did you get it? And using that as a metric for the end of this year.
And I'm sure some of your observations would be able to see some of that. Are you still using peer observations in the building?
We have not been, but that's actually part of our, that's part of our plan over the next couple of months. Because when we are working on a specific, so what I need to take out of this is evaluation. I want people to be able to grow and work on their own growth. And so one of the things we're putting into the plan is, as we start to move in one direction, trying to give teachers the opportunity to see each other and do peer observations in that case. Here is where I would have to fall back on Mr. Nolan saying COVID is a challenge because the number of substitutes is like zero. So trying to make sure that I have the ability to let teachers flow from classroom to classroom. And also then the fear of making sure they're covered in PPEs, so we're not crossing pods and that sort of thing. The most valuable thing I've done in the last couple of years, I think, has been having teachers do peer observations and learning from each other. So we are building this into the plan as long as we can work around, as my folks here say, the COVIDs.
Are there any other questions?
I just wanted to jump in because you were talking about kind of like making a clear understanding of what tier-one resources are, what tier-one even means in the classroom. And I think that that is, you know, that type of problem happens a lot. And trying to iron out some sort of clear, you know, sort of documentation that everyone can see and realize with, like, whether examples or however you frame it, is really powerful. And then especially if that's something we can build on across the district outside of just Abram Lansing as well.
So one of the things, Mr. Bird, that we've talked about, and thank you for putting this in your plan too, is building the capacity of teachers so that they can then also turn to other teachers. So in that way, this becomes bigger than Abram Lansing, so thank you for that. And also, I know that you mentioned Teresa Billington and Sharon Swain from Capital Reach and Bosse's, and they were wonderful to work with, but I need to thank you and your helping leadership team and also your teachers. You started this back in the spring. I remember you had some initial meetings in our first Zoom Google Meet and continued through. And this was a tremendous effort on the part of your staff. And Mr. Martinelli, me, the two Capital Reach and Bosse's representatives, and Mr. Bird also visited numerous classrooms and spent time in that as part of this plan. And so just a thanks to your entire staff for this process and for your leadership.
I'll spread the word. Thanks.
So, Mr. Bird, do you have any questions for us?
Is this an interview? Wait. No, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Bye.
Oh, you can leave and stay on.
Thanks.
Before you go on, I have some updates before we go to Stacy's. So in a few minutes, Stacy's going to provide some budget updates, but I did want to give you some updates first. So we were fortunate to be able to open all of our buildings after holiday break. And I wanted to share again the metrics that go into my decision-making of opening the buildings. One is our ability to staff, and so currently, staffing levels are very good. As you know, we had to close for some days prior to the break at the high school, moved to a home. Another is if there's evidence of spread in our buildings. And at this time, we don't have evidence of spread. As mentioned previously, through national studies, the rate of spread in schools is much lower than in surrounding communities. And I feel that this is due to the interventions that schools have, where students wear masks, social distance, there's hand sanitizing, disinfecting, there's temperature checks, health anticipation forms. So I do want to acknowledge the effort that goes into making sure these protocols are followed. And then thank the entire district community for their vigilance in following these protocols. Another quick update, and then if you have any questions. We have had some inquiries from parents into our instructional models for students when there are mandated absences. Either if it's for individual quarantines or if students are symptomatic. Back in September, it was agreed upon that students would receive assignments posted through Schoology or available, if students did not have computers, they'd be able to pick up assignments. So teachers have been working very hard to provide these assignments, some have been even dropping them off at home. Some teachers have been providing links to virtual classes that they also teach virtually, and some have been live streaming. But times have changed since September, and we have started discussions in terms of some revisions to this, to, especially because our numbers of mandated absences have increased. Some of the lengths of mandated absence have increased. And also today, I mean, this is head off the press, we have received word from our county department of health that symptoms of symptomatic students will now need to stay home and will not be able to attend in-person classes either until their sibling either tests negative or completes the period of time. So that's just head off the press today. So that means the numbers of students who could potentially stay home will grow. So we did begin discussions today, and we're going to continue reading and looking at the best words to the needs of our students. So just wanted to.
I think those are important conversations to have, especially in the climate that we're in right now. Not necessarily what happened in September, or what happened in March when we closed. I know that our staff is working really hard, and, you know, it's going to be difficult to have everybody kind of guiding their own path right now, or what they feel like they can do as a teacher to help their kids. So I think those conversations are important so that we can have like a district vision of this is what it looks like to be adult learning and that consistency. So I look forward to hearing what comes out of those meetings.
Any other questions before I turn the comments, before I turn this over to Stacy?
I just wanted to jump in real quick, and I appreciate the, you know, clear understanding of like what the benchmarks are for how we decide the process that we go through about keeping the school open and. Uh, the process that we go through about keeping the school open and deciding about whether we need to move to a virtual model or not and. Um, I'm I'm very appreciative of that and I think it's a. A good process for us to go through particularly, you know, uh about transmission and what that means like in schools. And I think the only kind of outlier I can see at this point, since we seem to be doing well to date, is the. Um, you know, the possible uh new strain that seems more transmissible that uh I think we know even less about. And um so we'll just have to keep our eyes on things as we move forward. But um thank you for the the updates.
I just add one thing. Um, associate, Ms. Mackey, are far too graceful to really let everybody understand. How hard it is to stay open. It's an unsustainable um level of effort that's required every single day by every single person who works for us. Studians are digging in, the food service folks are digging in, the clerical staff, I mean. I don't know that there's one person who's saying, that's not my job, I'm not doing that. If you're not exhausted at the end of the day, I'm not doing it right. So I just need everybody to understand that. We see all of you. We are so grateful and. They'll they'll never say how hard it is, but it's impossible. And thank you.
Awesome. So just a quick update on state and federal aid, and I'm happy to say that the first three boards are positive news in this category.
He's finally listening.
Say it really loud.
For general aid, we did receive our full December payment, so eight hundred and seventy-six thousand. Uh, we're not scheduled to receive uh general aid until March, so. Uh, the bulk of our aid, more than half of it, is paid March through June. Um, so I won't have an update in that category for uh January or February, but. Um, so that was good news. Pre-K aid, so we did receive our final payment uh for the prior year. So for the nineteen-twenty school year, we were made whole. Uh, that was seventy-four thousand dollars, so that's great news. And we did receive our Star Aid actually today, uh which was uh one point five million. So just some reminders of what's still pending. So transportation aid, you'll recall, there was a memo. We're not sure what's going to happen uh with the closure period. Uh, so that would have been mid-March through June and um. That would be our contract expenses that we paid.
Was the whole part of the dollar amount on that?
The exposure is just under three hundred and fifty thousand. Um, so we're hopeful that we have submitted the the survey that the Lucy's. Um, had collected right before the December holiday, so we're hopeful uh that. Something will come of that. Bosse's and access cost aid, that are, that's the withhold over the summer. So the exposure there is two hundred and ninety-four thousand. You'll recall, we had put that as deferred revenue. We're hoping that that will come in. Now that it's January, we're concerned that that might not come in. But we haven't seen word either way. Um, Smart Schools Fund Act, so those claims remain unpaid. It's about five hundred thousand. And our summer special ed program remains unpaid. That's two hundred and fifty-five thousand. So you'll recall, there was a federal stimulus uh passed earlier in in the year September-ish. Uh, so they're probably not the CARES Act. We had to resubmit that plan in November. We haven't received any news on that. That's that's six hundred thousand. And good news in grants, because we have seen some activity there. We've received initial payments in our McCann event, our IDEA, our pre-K. Title two and title four. Um, so the only grants that are pending at this point are future ready and they close out prior year, late December. Uh, so hopefully we'll have something on that soon. Uh, school improvement, we're working on on that right now. That's the advancing plan that we just talked about. And title one, which is usually. We've had a little back and forth with title one, so it's not unusual for title one to be pending at this point. Um, so we are floating quite a bit of money.
About one point five, right?
We've spent about one point five and with the money that just came in. We're floating about eight hundred and fifty thousand. Um, so now that we've received the initial payments, we can go ahead and request for the ones that we've received initial uh. Payments, we we can go ahead and request funds on what we've spent. So uh we'll be able to do that right away. Okay, do you guys have any questions on?
So you can keep the lights on?
So you can keep the lights on, but the flow between all things that talk about it too and have no other.
Right, right, yeah.
Yeah. So cash uh cash flows fund. All right, next slide. Uh, the budget process. So we had an initial. Budget committee meeting uh before the holiday break to talk about this high level. Uh, the methodology, and I think we discussed this actually in the last time you met me before, is you're. Create a zero-based budget. Which basically means we're starting at zero. And we're going to implement procedures for inclusion in the budget. There's three main categories that will ask each principal or department. Uh, director to uh bucketize the expenditures. So the first will be if it's a requirement or if it's a mandate, it'll be a one. If it's an identified need, it'll be two. And we will request a return on investment analysis for that. We'll talk about that a little bit more in a minute. And three is other. Uh, the other would be items that. Are important and we don't want to fall off the radar and maybe we've always done it and we we can't be more than the upcoming budget, but we just. We don't want them to fall off the radar, basically. Uh, return on investment analysis, uh, Mrs. Shay and I are working on an analysis tool. Uh, what it will be is an evaluation process. Uh, so the either the principal or the director will complete. Uh, the return on investment, it will have an itemized cost of whatever the item is, whether it's a service. Or it's a a program or a product. Uh, how many students and their staff members are impacted? It'll have a justification statement so that we can all understand why it's needed. It also have an area where they'll have the opportunity to crosswalk uh the requests to our beliefs. Uh, we're going to be talking about the beliefs tonight to make sure that they're updated so um that it's it's current. And the last criteria would be if it's a health and safety. And then uh the return on investment analysis will be submitted to the budget committee. And it'll be a criteria based off a point system. So I'll share that out soon as Mrs. Shay and I finalize it.
So will that be like a line item? They'll have to think for each line item or?
Yeah, so if it's if it's something that is uh in the two or three criteria, yes, it'll be accepted for each of those items. Yeah. It's going to be an interesting process.
They have point values because some of us are more data-driven than others.
Yes, exactly. So the costs, I I did do a rough draft, so like the cost would be, say, thirty points. Justification, ten points. Because there's currently four areas for the beliefs, forty points, and then the remaining for health and safety are total one hundred points. So that's. That's the rough draft as of right now, but yes, that's exactly how it'll work.
And there can be some qualitative indicators, that's what.
So next week, uh, Mrs. Shay and I will be very busy as well as the building principals. And uh Ms. Erin Hill, our director of special programs, will be meeting with our elementary BLTs uh Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. And we'll be meeting with our secondary uh teacher leaders. Uh, January twelfth and fourteenth. So that's the needs assessment process and we'll share that out. Um, with the budget committee and part of the the budget packet or budget resources and all of that. Okay?
So we'll also be meeting with middle and high school representatives from departments that won't have teacher leaders, so all all departments, gentlemen.
So tentative budget committee schedule. Uh, for January fifteenth, and this is based off of. How the presentations are going to be modeled. Um, just everybody's in there. January fifteenth, uh, we'd be meeting with the each of the elementary schools. And ELL, which is uh English English language learners. January twenty-fifth, we'd be meeting with our special programs. January twenty-seventh, we'd be meeting with our buildings and grounds department and our information technology department. And then, excuse me, January twenty-ninth, we'd be meeting with central office. Lucy's, which will be preliminary based on estimates. Uh, secondary schools, so the middle and the high school, as well as athletics. And so we'll be sending out meeting requests uh following this board meeting. I just wanted to know if there was any concerns. Or any conflict with any of those dates from any of our budget committee members. Okay. All right, great. Uh, budget resources, this is going to be um challenging, but we're going to get this done. We're going to uh have our needs assessment, we'll have trending data, we'll have staffing for building department. Enrollment, and that'll include the current enrollment and projected enrollment. Our session wood reports, our course listings for our high school. Our building conditions survey, which will be a draft, because I'm working on it. And any pertinent contracts that are coming up or the middle. Uh, the goal will be to have the line item budget to the full board February second that week. Before any of the presentation is prepared. So that basically gives Pam and I a day to scrub everything. A whole day? One full day.
Pretty generous.
For the resources, if you're able to send up to a little bit ahead of time.
Yeah, so.
Usually helps me come up with more questions.
So once we send out the meeting request, which we're planning on doing tomorrow. I'll file up with an email to each of the principals and the directors with what exactly they need to provide and a deadline. So that's the that's the intention. So tentative presentation schedule, and this is what we had discussed in our budget committee meeting. Uh, we would start our first uh budget presentation on February ten. And it would include each of our elementary schools and we would talk about our preliminary revenues. So that would be the tax cap calculation. And the hopefully we'd have the executive state aid one, so that would be our first presentation. On February twenty-fourth, we would have our special programs. Buildings and grounds and information technology, and then we would have a final discussion about our tax cap because it's due to the Office of State Controller on March first. On March tenth, we would have our secondary schools. Which would include athletics in that conversation, central office and Bosse services. And then we would have two budget deliberation sessions on March twenty-fourth and April fourteenth. We may have on the April fourteenth new information on revenues, we may not. I don't know what to expect this year. Um, so there there may be some some changes in information April fourteenth, maybe not. And then April twenty-first, we'd have a complete presentation, a full presentation, and then the board would take action. So I know we talked about uh previously that we didn't really have a lot of room for deliberations, so. I wasn't sure if this was going to be enough time, if we wanted to throw another meeting in or how it helps out that.
God, if we need.
If we need to.
If we need. There's there's space in between those things.
I'm comfortable with not making that decision right now.
Okay.
We'll see what comes out. We're being a lot more specific and individualized and itemized, and I think that, you know. I don't know that we need to make a decision now whether we need to have more time to talk about it.
Okay. So I'll leave this as this for now, then if we need to add later, then we'll just do that.
Yeah.
The deadline to approve the budget for the board is April twenty-third, okay, so. The next slide, we had talked about the last time we met, so there's no changes here. Um, just to recap, the um. Tax levy calculation is due on March first, so we've already talked about we'll meet twice before that deadline, talk about that. Uh, we just talked about April twenty-third, it's the deadline for the for the board to adopt the budget. Uh, the week of May fourth through May eleventh, we'll have the actual budget hearing. And then May eighteen is the actual vote as of as of today. So that's that's the new process. Um, how are we feeling about the process?
It sounds very well drawn out and planned, so that I appreciate.
I'm super excited.
Wonderful. So maybe we can talk about the beliefs and commitments and if there's nothing else.
Uh, yeah, so at this at this point in time, um, I know there was discussion at the last meeting of revisiting the uh. Police and commitments and then also potentially uh the vision. Uh, so um. Matt, do you want to um skip it from here?
Yeah, sure.
With Nolan, I'm sorry?
Yeah. Uh, we had talked about. And anyone can correct me if they have a different interpretation, but I believe for the most part for the second, third, and fourth beliefs and commitments, we. Felt those were still accurate. And again, we only did these last year, so um. There wasn't too much thinking that necessarily that uh we felt was necessary, but we did talk, there was discussion opened up for the first belief about. Rephrasing it about the the term that we've often come to use about a purpose and a plan. Um, something to the effect of, you know, all students will leave school with a clearly delineated and viable career path. Or, you know, uh, leave with clearly delineated goals and a path to personal success, uh, something along those lines perhaps. And uh just really is a good time for us to kind of finalize what the belief and commitment are as we will use these as our kind of pillars. In the budget process. And so if um anyone wants to chime in with any thoughts or if we're. Good to go with one of those two uh, you know, phrases and we're just uh. Need too much discussion at this point, but I'll open it up for board discussion.
Can can you repeat the second one you said?
Uh, yeah, um, so there the two are, I'll repeat both. All and these were just phrases that kind of came out of the last meeting. It was all students will leave school with a clearly delineated and viable career path. And then an alternative take on that was all students will leave school with clearly delineated goals and a path to personal success.
I like I like the second one, but I love Mark's um purpose and a plan, and I feel pretty strongly that that should translate into our vision and. So it's sort of the overarching, short, quick. You know. That's my opinion.
I also like the purpose and the plan.
Yeah, I think the.
I agree.
Um, here on the slide, the first belief would be we believe in a purpose and a plan. And uh, but it could also. Uh, uh, you know, translated to the vision as well.
I wanted it, I I'm sorry, I was kind of unclear. I was thinking, um. You know, every purpose and a plan would replace uh two thousand empowered learners. I still think that we believe in my expectations for all.
Right.
Okay, okay.
Yes.
So all the uh. So are we saying that the uh we believe in and commitments, we want here to stay and we just want to change the vision? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, I liked your uh modification, the the all students will leave school with clearly delineated goals and a path to personal success.
I also like that.
So that would be um.
Expectations for all.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
I I'm getting it now. Sorry.
Could could we could we change uh exposure to careers, comprehensive career education?
We can, um.
Exposure to careers, I should think, is a little weak. That could, that that doesn't, that could mean pretty small.
So the. So the, um, the, I believe what we were just talking about was replacing this whole commitment entirely with all students will leave school with clearly delineated goals and a path to personal success. If we want to put career in there, in some way, we can.
This would, this would include comprehensive career education.
Yes. I'm just trying to figure out how to wordsmith that.
Yeah, exposure to careers isn't really career education.
I agree.
Yeah.
I do think it, yeah, it is a little bit weak. So is there a way we can combine the all students will leave school with clearly delineated goals and a path to personal success with that?
With, with exposure to, what was, sorry, Mark, can you repeat what you said?
This, this would include comprehensive career education.
Just the second part of it.
Okay. I think that works. Certainly has, you know, if we want to make minor tweaks to the sentence or something.
Should we even try to smooth out the wording in this speech a little bit?
Yeah, yeah. But as the focus point for what the commitment represents, does that work for everybody?
Can you read that one more time, please, Matt?
Yep. It's all students will leave school with clearly delineated goals and a path to personal success. And this will include comprehensive career education.
Well, couldn't we just, after personal success, comma, and, you know, including career education? You know, I don't see it, I don't see the need for it to be another sentence, I guess.
Yeah, that, that's kind of what I was thinking about when I was thinking we would wordsmith it. But yeah, something along those lines.
Yeah, just making it one statement.
I do think we need to, we need to strengthen, I mean, career education could be, well, we have a career for once a year, so we did our bit.
Yes, I know.
And that's not enough.
Could we follow the, including career education, and then follow that with examples of, some bullets of what we mean by career education?
I don't know, all students will leave school with a clearly delineated, clearly delineated goals, having received comprehensive career education and a path to personal success.
Yes, that still doesn't address, that's still, no, I, I like that too, Nadia, it just doesn't, I, I just don't feel it's specific in what career education is.
But, but we're just setting an overarching, high-level thing, and then, and then
Yeah.
the priorities underneath it would describe what all of...
That's all, that's all I was adding. I, I realize it doesn't need to be in that statement.
Nadia, I really like that.
Yeah, that's fine. I like that.
I like that as well. Comprehensive addition there strengthens the career education piece.
Yes.
Nadia, do you want to read that one more time, just so?
She didn't write it down.
She didn't write it down. You can have her play the tape.
I need her name. Could you repeat that, Mrs. Shay? All students will leave school with clearly delineated goals, including comprehensive career education as a path to personal success.
I think it was and a path to personal success?
And.
Yes. All right, perfect.
Good job you were listening.
Pass the, talk with.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
If there's no other discussion from board members on this point, I did want to jump to an earlier question for, mostly for Stacy and the admin team about the budget for this year. Do we have any updated timelines on if the state's going to say, oh, yeah, here's the twenty percent reduction that was talked about, or not? Are they waiting until, you know, sixty days into the new federal administration? Like what's, what kind of timeframe are we looking at? Is it going to be when we get our budget for next year? Do we, do we have any idea, any updates?
Unfortunately, we do not have any updates, Matt. The state's fiscal year ends in March, and it's a real funding cliff for the state. So I suspect that we'll know in March.
Okay, that's what I was afraid of. Yeah, okay.
It's unfortunate, yeah.
If it's, if it's. Any other questions from board members? Anything related to the agenda?
Are we doing anything with the vision statement?
Oh, the two thousand empowered learners?
Yeah.
I, I think we can adjust that to a purpose and a plan, and have that also as the first belief. I think that works. Because it is kind of all encompassing, and it is a point we want to emphasize. Personally, I, I think that's fine. I'm sorry, no, we're not changing the belief, but I think changing the... Yes, yes.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you, guys. I did want to, as far as the agenda goes, I wanted to get a couple of donations that are on the agenda for tonight. I know there was one photo with the Elks, and that's not on the agenda, I believe, this particular agenda. And, but for the ones that are on the agenda, I wanted to thank various groups like Life Touch Studios, the College Board, Saw Plumbing, various booster clubs like our soccer, volleyball, and girls' and boys' basketball. So thank you to those organizations for their donations for our students, especially as difficult as the times that we're in right now. I think those donations are particularly impactful, so thank you. Any other comments or questions from the board, anything on the agenda? Without the case, I'll ask for a motion from the board for tonight's consent agenda.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Mrs. Giller?
Yes.
Mr. Pascal? Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dion?
Yes.
Mrs. Carey?
Yes.
Mr. Annaly?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Is there any questions or comments unrelated to the agenda? I think, you know, everything at the forefront, at least for me tonight, we've covered, but any other comments from anyone on the board?
Oh, I just wanted to reiterate, if anybody has anything they want raised specifically at the, yeah, I'm doing it. At the budget committee, just let Mr. Jackson know. Or me.
What you suppose, are we preparing for the mail-in voting as we did last year, assuming that we may very well need it?
So we haven't had any news on that at all, Mark.
I just think there's, I think there's a more than a good chance that, I think we'll be a little bit rough than we are now, but I, I don't think we're, I'd be surprised at the point that we can just do business as usual with the vote.
Yeah. I mean, just recently, they authorized the virtual meetings to continue through only the end of January. So they seem to be taking steps only a month at a time. But I, I don't disagree with you at all.
Yeah, I know that there, it was tighter than we would have liked with, you know, mailing everything out, and we'll, we should avoid that this year. There's no reason we shouldn't.
So we'll ask questions, we'll continue to be up with that.
You know, at the least, I would expect to see an increase in access requests.
I mean, preparation for supplies and not having a basket in it is probably, you know, a reasonable idea. You know, just so we're not paying more for something that we're going to have to do later anyway, but overspend on what we don't need, I mean, that's a challenge, right?
Yep. So maybe, or if you're on the list now, avoid the rush and all that in-house stuff, if you have a can.
Good point.
Yeah. Thanks for looking out for that. Very good point, thank you.
With that, if there's no other points of conversation, our next meeting as a full board is January twentieth, and that'll be at six o'clock again, plus for a motion to enter into executive session at seven oh three to discuss matters leading to the appointment and employment of a particular individual.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Mrs. Giller?
Yes.
Mr. Pascal?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dion?
Yes.
Mrs. Carey?
Yes.
Mr. Annaly?
Yes.
And Mr. Nolan?
Yes. Thank you, everyone, and I'll see the rest of the board here in a few minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.